All right. Good evening, everybody. We are here at six oh four P M for our May twenty eight, twenty twenty four Marindale Council. Workshop. Tonight's workshop will be on the changing lock. Annexation process as well as. Our F Y twenty three, twenty four midyear budget report. At this time, if everyone could please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
God.
Underground.
Beautiful liberty and justice.
Justice for all. That is harder to do than one might think with everybody talking. So. I appreciate everybody being here and I know that some residents will join as well. We're going to go ahead and start. I let me take a look, see. Yeah. I think unless someone objects strongly, what I would like us to do is to go ahead and. Go through our presentations on the on the potential annexation area and the proposed annexation area. Get all of that information, then we can have some public input and then town council can have some one on one discussion and. Deep discussion on their feelings about this particular proposed annexation area. So I will turn this over at this time. To Robert and. I hang on a second. I make sure I got everybody here. Brad, you're here as well, too. I know I saw you up there.
Yes, sir.
And Brad as well. Brad.
Thank you. Robert, you want to do any interruption or you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, this is a property that we identified, I believe it was in two thousand fourteen as a. Potential annexation site when we're trying to restrict or try to negotiate a J P A joint planning agreement with Orange County. When we were looking at the possible annexation of the northwest corner of Apopka Island and Conroy Windermere. When that came up, you know, there was a lot of discussion with the Coe and Winter Garden and then as well as Orange County as far as okay, where are you guys expecting to possibly annex in? Just so they they would understand what our growth potential would be and understanding that again, everything that's around us is pretty much already built out. So the focus of the annexations areas were the northwest corner that would go west down sixth. And then include Shondalock with the possibility of going to McKinnon and then Isleworth and nothing south of that. So the area that we took a look at that would. Is contiguous and makes a lot of sense because it's a gated community. And there would be no negative financial impact to the town and that the Shondalock H O A and some of the residents have expressed a lot of interest. We believe that this would be a win win for both the town of Windermere and also the the residents of Shondalock. And with that said, I'll let Brad go through the process and I'll get into the specifics as far as the cost benefit analysis, the politics. And then Chief can add in some of the the metrics when it comes to. Police protection versus Orange County protection. So Brad, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Robert. Mayor, this was again Brad Cornejo with the Waitrim serving as your contracted town planner. So as the as the council is aware, we've had a few discussions about this annexation. So I do kind of just want to give you a brief summary again about the process where and really where we are in the process. As well as a little bit more information on the background or about annexation. In your agenda item, you do see there's an annexation analysis that we did prepare. And that's one of the requirements that we have to do as part of the annexation process. Not only by your own comprehensive plan that talks about, we need to look at what would be the impact to the town based on annexation. But also under Florida statute and what we have to provide to Orange County if the town does decide to move forward with this process. So I'm going to provide a brief summary of what's in that analysis, at least for most of that analysis. So what you see on the slide there is is the annexation area, proposed annexation area, that's Shondalock area. The town boundary, existing town boundary is there to the east in that green. Area and then the bluish area is the Shondalock area. It is adjacent to the town. That is why we're able to consider annexation. It is contiguous to the town's boundary. The Shondalock area that we're looking at is approximately one hundred and two acres in size in total. It's comprised of seventy four parcels. That breaks down into, at the time we got this data, there is fifty one single family homes there. With an average parcel size at about one and a half acres. There are six vacant residential properties. There's sixteen parcels that the H O A owns. That's either the roadway or stormwater, things like that within the area. There's one agricultural exempt property. And that's the breakdown of the properties that are within Shondalock. One of the things that I do want to point out is, you know, the way this community, the Shondalock community is, it's very similar to the town of Windermere. In terms of the lot sizes, as you see here, you know, the average lot size is an acre or greater. There are some smaller lots, I mean, about half acre in some parts of it. But by and large, the it is the same as the town in terms of that. Size of properties and as well as many of the home sizes are very similar that we have throughout the town of Windermere. And and that is is Chondulak. One of the things that I do want to talk about briefly is, and this is part of your comprehensive plan and something we'll talk about more as we move forward on your comp plan. But one of the things we look at is your build out and and you have, you know, the town of Windermere, you're what's would be called an essentially built out community. You have very few vacant properties left in the town. And because of that, we see redevelopment, but when we look at ultimate build out. Right now, your population, based on the the most recent estimate that we have, is three thousand and thirty eight residents. If the rest of the city, the rest of the town builds out on those vacant properties. You're looking at a population of about three thousand two hundred and fifty. And that's would be the full build out of the town as it is today. Without any significant other changes in the future, but that's what it would be. If we were to annex in Shondalock. That would bring in approximately another two hundred and twelve people. Into that total build out, which would then bring the future total build out of the town of Windermere to three thousand four hundred and sixty two. Still not a very big number in terms of population and and those kinds of impacts, not a significant number change in terms of that part of it. The most important part that when we look at annexation in terms of the the technical side of annexation. Is to assure that it's compliant with Florida statutes under chapter one seventy one. And that's what the report you have as part of your agenda item, that's what that's looking at and I will summarize it for you. What we have to determine first is it meets all the prerequisites prerequisites for annexation. Meaning that it it's contiguous, it's not a an area that kind of is strung along a roadway to just annex in an area that we want to get. It but it's a defined area where clearly we meet those requirements. The other part of that analysis. Is looking at, is this area what the statute calls developed for urban purposes? And that definition is pretty pretty easy to meet, actually. It's basically that the lots in this area are less than five acres in size, which is the case here. Every one of them. Is less than five acres in size. So it clearly meets that test that it's developed for urban purposes. So those are the most primary prerequisites that we have to look at to make sure it's contiguous, it's developed for urban purposes. And it is not. You know, strung along just to pick something up and which we meet all those standards and requirements. The other part of the analysis that we have to look at, and I think Robert will get more into the details about this and I'll give the high level about this. Is we then have to look at, you know, how will this property be served after annexation? How will a town provide public service to this area? And at the high level, what you know, with the Shondalock community, as we've discussed previously. The roadways in Shondalock are private roadways. They're behind a gate. They're maintained by the Shondalock H O A. That would not change after annexation. That would still be private roadways. The town would not take any responsibility for the maintenance of any of the roads within Shondalock. As well as the related stormwater that goes with with that community. That would all remain private. So there would no no change. Before or after annexation on how that would, how that would be provided. In terms of utilities, again, it's very similar to the town. The only utility that they have there in terms of water and sewer is they do have Orange County water, does serve the Shondalock community. As you all know, some of the town currently has Orange County water and you're in the process now of expanding that to other parts of the town. So they're they're similar to the town in terms of the water provision. Again, that will not change. They would still be served by Orange County Utilities with the water, water services. Also similar to the town, they are on septic. They do not have Orange County sewer there currently. Again, same as the town, most of the town, we don't have sewer yet, but as you all know, you have authorized a sewer master plan study. So if this were to be annexed in, that could be part of that future analysis. Of the future expansion of sewer services with within the town. So really, there's no change in terms of water or sewer, annexation or or stormwater with annexation. In terms of, and I'll let again, Robert and the chief talk more specifically here, but in terms of police and fire. Again, after annexation, it would become the responsibility of the town to provide the police and fire services for this community. In terms of the public, those public services. So we we really don't see, there's really not a significant concern or issue. On this annexation with the ability for the town to meet public services or difficulty to do it. Oh, the last one I didn't touch on, but I need to touch on is solid waste. What would also happen, and this is under the statute, is the solid waste provider would switch to the town. But there is a provision under statute that the existing provider under the county can continue to provide services in the area for five years after annexation. Or until their contract expires. But I don't think this will be an issue because Waste Pro is the provider under the county and the same provider potentially under the town. So I don't anticipate that being an issue. Moving forward, if this area would be annexed into the town. And I'm sorry, I have the cleaning people want to come in and clean my garbage can. So that's that's the solid waste. And 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 I'll drop into the financials. There will be, what will happen generally on the financials if it does annex into the town. You know, some of the taxes, assessments that they would pay under the county would go away. Like fire, there's the main one would go away. And coming into the town, they would then pay as well as the general county tax that everybody pays. Whether you're in a town, city or the county, they would also pay the the town's tax rate, general, general fund tax. As well as the town assessments and Robert has has the more specifics about that. But when we looked at that in terms of the analysis. What you'll see is we don't anticipate a negative impact on the town. We think that town and Roberts reviewed this. The town can absorb these services with the additional revenues that would come in without a negative impact on the town operations. As part of this annexation. So that's the overall, that's a summary of that analysis. In terms of the process. Where we are at the moment is the first step still. And that is that we we need to do this analysis, which we've done. And if the town council does decide to move forward. With this annexation process, what we need to do with this analysis is then we need to send it to Orange County. And we have to give Orange County notice that we are pursuing annexation of this area, provide them this information. In my memo, I say they they could object and we mean they they could object, but that doesn't mean we can't move forward if they do object. But we would work to resolve any objections if there were any. I quite honestly don't think we get any. And and once that occurs, then we would begin the the public noticing for the public hearings that would be required to come to the town council. For you all to move forward with the actual referendum now to. For the the annexation. As we spoke in the past, because this is considered involuntary annexation. Because, you know, they're not, they're not, we didn't get a hundred percent of the residents are asking to be annexed in and we would not, I think, get there. We have to do a vote of the residents of Shondalock, of the voters of Shondalock, the registered voters of Shondalock. That is required by statute that you have to have them vote as our last count, which was a year ago, but I don't think it's probably changed much. There there was a hundred and eight registered voters in Shondalock. It's, you know, plus or minus a little bit a year later. And if we do move forward, we'll get an updated number on that. I don't think it'll change much, but you would be setting that referendum date for that to occur. The town council, you do have the option under the statute. You're not required to do this, but you do have the option. To also bring it to a vote of the registered voters of the town of Windermere. So you you could do that. You don't have to do that, but you can do that. If you do that, in order for the annexation to move forward or to be approved, you would need to have both the registered voters of Shondalock. And the registered voters of Windermere, meaning those who actually vote, it's a simple majority of those who vote. They both would have to approve it. If one or the other doesn't approve it, then it doesn't. Get approved and the annexation can't move forward. So that's an option the council has, but you're not required to do that. If the referendum passes, however you do it. Then the next steps would be to finalize the annexation, which would include amending your comprehensive plan to give it a a town future land use designation within your town that would require us to assign it to planned unit development. Future land use and then rezone it to a town designation. Again, it would have to be zone plan development per your comprehensive plan. Any areas annex in the town have to come in that way. But that's a good thing because that what that allows us to do is develop the zoning standards and development standards for Shondalock. Where there may be significant differences between the town and the county. That that may be a negative impact on develop, you know, what folks that live in Shondalock would expect. In terms of what they could do after annexation. But that gives us the tool and U S Town Council, the ability to consider those and potentially approve those as part of that development agreement with that plan development. And once that's occurs, they are fully part of the town of Windermere and are like every other resident of the town at that point. So that's my brief presentation and I'll turn it over to Robert.
Thank you, Brad. Part of your analysis was trying to figure out how much the financial impact would be to the residents of Shondalock and I think the average was about fourteen hundred.
Right, yeah. If you take the difference between they would pay a little bit less in ad valorem taxes, but they would pay a little more in assessments. The net change would roughly about fourteen hundred dollars a Shondalock average property owner in terms of assessed value. Would pay about fourteen hundred dollars more a year than what they currently pay.
And just so the council is aware, Brad and I worked on a lot of annexations when I worked for Wildwood and he worked for Sumter County. So we know the ins and outs of annexation and what you can and cannot do, especially when it came to the Department of Community Affairs, which is now Department of or. Economic Opportunity. So we we are very well versed in this.
Yes, we know, we know how county and local cities fight with each other, then get along and make it work at the end. So, yes.
All right. So administration issues. We'll get into the town responsibilities versus H O A responsibilities, solid waste recycling, fire service protection, E M S, politics, additional benefits, and then financial impacts. Yeah, what I have pulled up here is the presentation that we did with Shondalock residents. I believe we had three public meetings with them. Via Zoom. We also had individual meetings with some of the residents and also their H O A. So what the town would do is we would accept its existing agreement, the plat that was entered into with Orange County. So the H O A would continue to be responsible for the roads, common areas, stormwater and lighting. And we would, you know, unlike what happened, I think in two thousand and eleven, we would make sure that everything that we agreed to is in an annexation agreement. So. Nobody can point back and say, well, you do, you agreed to take over the sidewalks or you agreed to take over the lighting or the roads. We would make sure that's all laid out in agreement. So solid waste recycling. Currently, again, we do two times a week solid waste pickup Tuesdays and Fridays. We do recycling on Tuesdays and we do yard waste pickup once a week on Wednesdays. These numbers are a little outdated here, but it'll show, well, did show the the residents of Shondalock, what the. Current rate was, what they were paying Orange County with Waste Pro and what they would pay with the town of Windermere. A lot of the residents, when we did talk to Shondalock. They were concerned about the one time a week pickup. Because if it did fall on a holiday or something like that, then they would have to wait for a rescheduled date. And a big thing that they were really concerned about was emergency response, which I think we can get into a little bit later, but. When they saw Ian and Irma, they saw how quickly the town of Windermere was able to go ahead and clean up the limb debris. And get everything resolved within a short amount of time. Brad, I'm sorry, I have to meet you for a second. How we were able to quickly take care of that. And remember when Orange County has to deal with. You know, natural disaster, they have to look at it countywide. So I believe it took about three or four months maybe to pick up the limited debris that was in around the Shondalock area. So again. With a smaller community, we're able to expedite things and get things done, taken care of pretty quickly as opposed to as far as countywide. Fire protection, E M S. You know, this is something that. Maybe a point of contention with the Orange County and this was brought up when we first talked about the annexation of the northwest corner of Apopka Island and Conroy Windermere Road. Was the fact that we have an automatic or we have an agreement with the Coe. So Coe provides fire service protection and E M S to the town of Windermere. So what a Coe has is an agreement with Orange County. It's called a, I'm sorry, a Coe. Has an agreement with us and they have a automatic aid agreement with Orange County. And that's different from a mutual aid agreement. Mutual aid agreement is pretty much. You know, if if there's a huge fire. Then everybody all hands on deck, they can go to that fire and go ahead and take care of it. An automatic aid agreement is different because it's you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. Because in North Ecoy, there are less or there's more. Fire stations than they are in South Ecoy. So. In South Ecoy, Orange County responds to those. E M S calls and to. Fire department calls because they have more stations in the south, which includes Windermere. But to the north, a Coe provides that same service to Orange County because Orange County doesn't have that many fire stations to the north of a Coe. So, you know, one of the things that they were scared of, Orange County, I would say, is that we would be looking at annexing in Isleworth and that's a huge hit, not only to. Their Orange County Fire Department, but it's also a huge hit to their sheriff's office. So of course they want to keep that money and make sure that. You know. It's not going to be a huge financial hit to them. So when we did bring that to their attention, you know, they said they would object based on fire E M S. But again, you know, there's. A new sheriff in town, I would say. And also, when we talked to a Coe, Coe says that again, you know, it's it's such a small area that it really wouldn't be. Any real addition to them providing that fire service protection or E M S. So again, the assessment that's currently calculated at point eight mils, but. Based on the values that they have, we could potentially lower the mileage rate for the entire town to point seven. Because again, that that fire service agreement that we have with the Coe only goes up by fifty thousand dollars a year. And again, I address the Orange County automatic aid agreement. So with politics against one is annex into the town. The residents of Shondalock would be able to vote in the town of Windermere elections. This will provide a more of a local say in what directly impacts them. So after a year residency, then they would have the eligibility to run for Windermere elections. They will continue to have the same electoral rights that they had when they were Orange County residents. So they'll still be able to vote for Orange County mayor. More kind of commissioners, the sheriff, tax collector, all of them. One of the benefits to Shondalock too, as far as, you know, having annexed into the town of Windermere is that they have a lot of direct access to local leaders that make local decisions. And also a lot of direct access, which I think all of you know, to town management, public works and to the chief of police. So some of the added benefits that they would have is that they would be allowed to have access to the boat ramps, Fernwood and Bessie. They would have access to the Main Street and Windermere Recreation Center. They'd also be able to attend those yearly events for just residents only. And they would receive the discounts through town halls and they can sit on various town boards and committees. Again, as I discussed before, when it came to disaster recovery, that was one of the big. Points as far as they saw as a benefit was annexing to the town was that we were able to respond more quickly. And also with the trash pickup, they wanted two times a week as opposed to just that one time a week. You know, because again, if you cook fish on a Tuesday, then it's or Wednesday, then it's sitting pretty much all week in your trash can until. The next pickup date and they just saw the more of a benefit to having that twice a week pickup. Financial impact. The cost difference is actually going to be about one thousand four hundred a year when you look at. The overall net average for everybody. Again, this was. Updated to to reflect that number, but this is again, the old number is three seventy five, but it's actually going to be about fourteen hundred dollars. And when we do the public information workshops with. The Shondalock residents. You know, just to update them, let them know what the process is and where we're on the process, we'll be able to give them that number. So. Before I get to questions, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Chief Ogden and he can give a quick update on the benefits of having the town of Windermere versus. Orange County Sheriff's Office relative to police protection and public safety.
Thanks, Robert. Overall, from the police department, it would be de minimis on our impact at the Windermere Police Department. When I reviewed the statistical data, we'll update that once more. They only had twenty six calls per service. The entire year of two thousand twenty two. Once again, I'll update two thousand twenty three should we decide to move forward. Out of those twenty six calls for service, the far majority of those calls were just nothing but what we call alarm calls. So the majority of those, eighty to ninety percent of those were called off. There was one emergency call for service and that ended up being an accident right at the front of Shandalock. That came into the sheriff's office. They ultimately never even responded and the Florida Highway Patrol responded to that. So. We see very little impact as far as we do not need to bring on additional officers, additional equipment or anything of that. We can pretty much assimilate that in our regular patrol services. Some of the big additional things obviously is our community policing efforts that we have, getting to know the residents. But more importantly, just like some of the elected officials found out just two weeks ago, once more. Is that our officers carry the A E Ds and we deployed the A D on a traffic. Situation, we're an individual. Shocked him with the A D and brought him back to life and actually just got an update yesterday. He is doing fine. We have done that about three or four times in the last four or five years. I don't think you can put a financial cost on that. We respond to medical calls. Matter of fact, we usually beat the fire department, any fire department there quite by a by significant amount of time because our officers are in the town. So if there's any questions, just let me know.
Hey, Chief. Could you?
I'm sorry.
I I'm sorry too. I didn't mean to jump in, but Chief, could you provide some of the pluses for the police department in terms of having a little larger area to serve? Some of the upside for, you know, for us, other than just for the residents of Shondalock.
Yeah, sure. You know, anytime we have some new area, that's a new area for officers to patrol and get to know the folks, you know, we. We we have a pretty small town, a pretty small footprint. It's like one point nine square miles and. And you can imagine for twelve hours a day, if you drive around that, you're going to get a little bit, little bit bored there. So it's nice to meet some new folks, you know. A lot of the folks in Shandalock, I know, we know, they show up to the food truck events and things like that. So. I kind of feel like they're a part of the town anyway, as far as the community policing effort. So I think that would be great for the officers, just to kind of expand that that area just a little bit, that footprint.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. One of the financial benefits for the town of Windermere would be a, not only an ad valorem revenue, but also with the ancillary tax revenues. but also with the ancillary um tax revenues. So the town, once annexation is completed, uh, would be looking at between four or five hundred thousand and positive revenue for the town of Windermere as a whole for the seventy four parcels.
Hey, Robert, if I can add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Again, we do, we do know some of the residents already, and I know uh, we don't have a lot in either one of our jurisdictions, but uh about six months ago, Orange County Sheriff's Office had a significant um burglaries that were going on and helicopters and everything were over the area. I can tell you that within about um fifteen minutes, one of the Shandalock residents called me, texted me, and I found out exactly what was going on. Was able to put their mind at ease, you know, what the perimeter was, where it was set up and that it wasn't in Shandalock, but it was in a neighborhood just to the uh west of them. So I think that direct ac- access between that, um, our Windermere Safety Watch bulletins that go out pretty frequently just keeps the residents uh very, very informed. As you guys know, communications, I think, is one of our our great attributes in our department.
And Mayor to add too is that, you know, some of the apprehension I had some from some of the Windermere residents was um adding, you know, more people to the um boat ramps, adding more people to the um tennis course, but as you can see with the seventy four lots, most of them do have boat houses. Um, so they wouldn't require use of the Fernwood or Bessie boat ramps. And again, as Chief said, I think the impacts to the Main Street courts or anything else be uh de minimis of it. If any.
Robert, I did one, I had one thing to the park just to support what you said there, Robert. One of the pieces of analysis we had did do in your study. We do have to look at the level of service that you have in your comprehensive plan for parks and recreation. And what you have adopted for your parks and recreation, for your different facilities, like tennis courts, boat ramps, bike path. Even with the annexation, you you far exceed what your requirements are in terms of what you already provided in the town. So there's, there's no concern with that.
So to sum it up before we get to questions is that, you know, stop looked at this as a selective annexation. Um, it's a gated community, wouldn't have any negative um financial impacts or level of service impacts to the town of Windermere or its residents. Um, and we believe that this just makes sense. It's contiguous, compact, again, it's gated. Uh, they'll be taking care of their roads, their uh stormwater uh and the signage. They can also apply for stormwater credits of twenty five percent once annexed in. Um, and once they are annexed in, then would have to wait that lag for probably a um taxable year. So again, the the financial impacts for the town is really not going to be substantial enough to outweigh the uh amount of money that uh the town would receive from the annexation after it's all said and done. And with that, I'll turn over to the questions, Mayor.
Thank you all. Um, council, any uh questions for the presenters at this point, then we'll go to public comment.
Um, I have a few questions.
Hang on, um, uh, thanks, Brandy. Will you use your little hand up thing and Mandy, um, David, you'll go and then you'll be next, okay? Thanks, Brandy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Brad, I just have a uh, probably just one question, but going back to the voting thing, so we can, I just trying to wrap my head around what you said, so we can have just the Shandalock neighborhood. But then you mentioned if we open it up to the town that both have to approve it, in other words, the majority of the town would have to be voting yes, I'm I'm assuming. And then most of Shandalock, how do we? I mean, I know we figured it out with voting, we we know that, but if the majority, but they both have to agree, can't have, like, if the majority of the town says no, then that's it, then even if Shandalock says yes, I I I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. If they've already agreed to it, then we're kind of really putting it into the town's hands, so that that.
You are correct, right. That's correct. Under the statute, if you go both voting, both have to approve it. So if 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 Chondalock registered voters who vote, support it and approve it. But town of Windermere registered voters who vote, don't approve it and they deny it, then the annexation does not move forward.
Okay, the 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 main issue that I've had um residents mention is just the fact that they can get on council and and do things. Robert, I think this is for you. Did uh, it said a year? Is that a year after annexation or a year that they've just lived in Shandalock?
It would be a year after residency within the town of Windermere. And again, um, we all know how hard it is to um get people to volunteer for free to sit on town council, especially when it's sporting sometimes. So again, with the seventy four lots and the uh hundred plus um resident electors, um, you know, it's, it just adds to that. Um, you know, i- if the town were to look at larger areas in the future, then we may look at the possibility of uh districts and then have the mayor as far as a district wide um uh election. Um, but with this small of an annexation, as far as the political impact, I don't see it being significant.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all my questions.
But they would.
Or knocking the door down to run for election and council and have elections. That would be great.
And it would open the door for them to immediately sit on, um, because it just means that they have to be a resident of the town of Windermere. They can sit on various boards and committees.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, councilperson Mandy. Brandy, you're up.
Okay, so I want to kind of back up here for a minute, and this is based on a lot of questions that I've been getting from people too. So um, what has been annexed into the town so far that wasn't originally part of like town limits way back when? Is it all of the HOAs that we currently have?
Pretty much, yes, because I mean, we'd have to go back all the way to nineteen twenty seven uh from the original plot and see how we've expanded over the uh, the course of the history of the town of Windermere. But I believe in two thousand eight or two thousand uh nine, when the town did annexations, they focused on um the manors, the willows.
Marina Bay.
Marina Bay and then um the area of Estancia.
Yeah, at Sunset, the only other one would be Sunset. Sunsetville, Sunset, yeah.
Sunset Bay.
Sunset Bay, thank you.
Oh, I'm trying, the area along Lake Butler Boulevard looked like it was annexed in the mid to late nineteen eighties.
Which, and that was, what about Lake Crescent? Is it one of our HOAs? Crescent Reserve or whatever it's called, sorry.
It's not just areas that are HOAs, like, like, like Butler Boulevard, we don't have HOAs along there. So some of the areas have been annexed or just areas that have been annexed over time.
Yes, the property that was west of Windermere Recreation Center was annexed in, which I believe is the area that you're talking about.
Yes, it's a separate one.
Okay, okay. Um, another question that I have from somebody is would the rest of the residents' mileage rate be reduced by adding Shandalock?
There's a possibility, but that's not a guarantee. Um, you know, some of the residents of Shandalock, you know, the question that they ask is, well, once you annex in, you have the opportunity to raise taxes. And my answer is yes. Any council has the opportunity to raise those taxes if they want to. Um, but my response to that is take a look at our track record. Um, we've kept our um mileage rate stable since twenty eighteen. Um, in addition to that, I think, you know, town council and the mayor have been very um cost conscious when it comes to any increases in uh the mileage rate, if it's not for a specific person or purpose. Um, but with the amount of money that we would be gaining from this uh selective annexation, um, you know, I, it it'd be unlikely that I believe this current town council or future town council would increase the mileage rate. Um, but there is a possibility of uh lowering the mileage rate. Um, if we are to see pretty much a windfall from, um, you know, the possibility of, you know, the the fire department assessment may be lowered uh from point eight to point seven, because that that's pretty much a fixed cost each and every year. Um, you know, we don't know if the cost from Waste Pro are going to be lowered or, you know, hopefully stabilized on at some point based on uh the way the CPI is increasing. Um, but I do not foresee an increase in taxes, um, but there is always a possibility for an increase or a decrease in those taxes. It all depends on what projects we're looking to fund and um how we're trying to move forward.
So, and let me, let me, let me just um chime in there for one second. Um, so you know, with a- any council every year has the option to raise or lower councils, whether there's annexations or or not. I I think generally though, it's been our traditional stance to look at um selective uh annexation in a way that hopefully you're bringing someone into the fold that brings a lot to the table in terms of waterfront, in terms of uh, you know, minimal costs and uh to to keep up uh the area, um, you know, kind of adds to the, adds to the melting pot that is Windermere and and they are kind of conducive to um meeting some of our objectives, which some of those are to increase the waterfront acreage and things like that wherever possible. Um, in a selective manner. So I think that we look at these types of situations as hopefully they're bringing something to us that allows us, uh allows that that hole to be better, allows us to do some things maybe we wouldn't be able to do. Um, but of course, council always has that opportunity every year when we budget to raise or lower. Brandy, I turn the floor back over to you.
Okay, um, I mean, and you, you, you said like a couple of things like lakefront, but one of the things I had somebody ask is what are the pros to the town really, other than revenue? Because so far I'm not getting positive feedback, so.
So there's uh the, there are several positives and I'll, you know, let others talk on these too, but I mean, so the positives are you control what is near your borders, okay? So if you don't, if if we don't annex this at some point, someone else will. You may like that, you may not like that. But I promise you that someone will. Um, can be good, can be bad, but it's always better. I think if we look at history, when we have these opportunities like this, they're always wise to take. Um, the Four Corners is another example of something that we've had to fight and to try to regulate with minimal uh abilities to do so, because we didn't take those opportunities when they were there. Um, you know, so there's, there are situations where you've got to look at it and say, you know, if there's no negative, it's probably a positive. Um, especially in the the size and scope of this. You know, if you look at other larger properties, well, that's a little different equation. You have to have a a much deeper conversation and and a much deeper evaluation in terms of of what, of of what someone else might bring in. Uh, but when you look at these smaller, you know, fifty one single family dwelling units, it's i- it's, it's probably, it it just skews heavily towards the positive. Um, Brandy, go ahead.
Um, okay, so the other thing is, and this is kind of maybe a bit of a question um for Brad, I don't know, or whoever. Um, so you know, when we talk about, you know, that they already have potable water, um, but the sewer is our biggest cost item that, you know, the town is going to probably face in the next twenty to thirty years. Um, because it's a significant cost. So the moment they're annexed in, any plans that we have to do, you know, sewer system in town then now has to include them. Um, and you know, mostly we're saying there's all this revenue, there's no cost to the town, but wouldn't the cost of the sewer system be significant because of how far they are from the central portion of town and how far it has to extend out, there's still going to be a cost associated to that, that's going to come with annexing them. So I had somebody asking me.
I I can answer that, Brad. I mean, because it is contiguous, especially with Lake Butler Boulevard, with our plans when they come through relative to uh wastewater services. You know, eh, funding sources is always going to be an issue. Um, whether we look at a municipal service taxing unit or a municipal service benefit unit. Um, you know, i- if we were to do a MSBU or MSTU, this adds more people to that pot uh in order to fund the overall system. Um, but again, the fact that it is contiguous, you know, that 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 run's going to be a lot shorter, but yes, if we were going to self-fund this, then definitely the 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 town would have to bear that cost. But in order for that money to be feasible for us to do sometime in the future, um, we would have to look at either federal dollars, state dollars to offset a lot of that cost. Um, but we were probably looking at either the MSB or the MSTU um to fund that, that wastewater service.
So the, so the reality is that no one's likely coming to fund our, our sanitary sewer system in full. So there's always going to be a cost to the town, to the residents whenever this day comes. Um, you know, this is, this is a reality that even with, even in the best of funding scenarios, there's going to be a cost to uh each and every resident in in reality.
Um, so one of the other things that I thought, and this is, this is, I guess, just to to confirm and, you know, to also to put it on the record. So I received an email today. Um, that was correspondence back in, I guess, November. Um, and it was an answer that had come from Brad to a resident about the number of existing homes and what this resident had just defined as the core, quote unquote, of Windermere versus the remaining areas of Windermere. And their definition of core was from the bridge on Main Street to the north, uh Chase Road to the south. Uh, the boat ramp on Conroy Windermere Road to the east and the lake to the west. And so this is what the person was defining as the old original Windermere. Um, and that, in that core area, as of the time that this was uh calculated, I guess, which was based on August twenty twenty three data from Orange County Property Appraiser, there were five hundred and seventy eight homes currently in the core. And in the remaining areas of Windermere, which some people are calling the outskirts, there are five hundred and eighty five. So right now, we're pretty much at a fifty fifty split of the people kind of on, you know, the Isthmus and a little bit to the east. And then everything else is HOAs and whatever that's been annexed in. So i- is that data correct, Brad? And is it still similar? I mean, I guess this was back in August. I don't know if you've looked at any of it since then.
First of all, I would, I would disagree with the uh, the the, the core area, as far as they described it, would be from the canal south to chase north um, to the boat house or the boat ramps west. Um, but remember, even parts of Second Avenue had to be annexed in at some point in order to make sure that um, the town can control those areas. And I think what they're calling as far as the old um old town or you want to call it, would be the the dirt roads. So everything with dirt roads would be considered that that core area.
Half dirt roads, half not dirt roads at this point, sort of. For a loose, loose definition of which section is which.
But I think it's, listen, it's important to note and 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 for the record, there, there is no such thing. We are one town, one Windermere. Everyone is represented the same. And and I think it's super, super important to make sure that we all understand. And and I know that everyone that works on council realizes that. Um, you know, there is, there are the dirt streets and there are paved streets, but we are one town, one Windermere. And uh, there's nothing in this that's going to change the character of either um, community. Now, there are larger annexations that have been discussed in the past that certainly have the potential to do that. Um, but I think I just want to make sure that we're looking at the same thing um in terms of, you know, if you're going to bring in a thousand houses, that's a much different conversation than bringing in fifty one contained units.
Well, I, my only other, my only other comment would be, I I remember back at the October meeting, um there was a workshop, which I wasn't on council then. I do remember one resident um, that spoke, uh, had made a comment about being worried about the dilution of the residents. Um, and I, and I don't mean that, I don't mean it in any way to say that I don't consider the manors or willows or any of them part of town. They are a part of town. I think that the concern is like even with the most recent, um, you know, wine bar issue that came up, it was a lot of residents saying, you know, eh, or the pavilion, or, I mean, you take your pick of anything over the last two years. That residents who live in the dirt street area are impacted the most by these decisions of whether there's going to be a pavilion or whether there's going to be, you know, you know, Pet Fest expanding or, you know, like taking the break in the summertime now from food trucks. Because everything that happens in the central downtown impacts the lives of the people who live on the dirt streets just a little bit more. If it's a big event than it does on the outskirts, like the people who live on the other side of Shonda and Shandalock, they're not going to be disturbed by people parking on their roads. They're not going to have the events happening, the pavilion, talks of paving the roads, which we've gone through, um, and all these different things. So a lot, and I've actually had quite a few people that are concerned with, I guess, what you would call a ratio. Because the more people we bring in, then those people have that chance to say. Because the more people we bring in, then those people have that chance to say, well, then, you know, yeah, we want a pavilion, yeah, we want this because it's not in my backyard, NIMBY. It's not in their backyard, it's part of their town. But it's not going to impact them the same as about half of our residents who are on the downtown. Um, so anyways, that that's the end of my comments and you guys are free to comment back. Uh, my only other comment would be that I think that the last few years council has done, even before I was on, of course, um, a great job of starting to be more transparent and starting to listen to the feedback of the residents and hear what they want. And I feel like doing a referendum only for Shondalock is kind of taking a step backwards in that. Um, because I think there's been a, you know, a lot of strides forward and the town really listening to the feedback of what the residents want. So personally, I think that the referendum should include the town to have a say so because it is going to affect them in some way, shape or form. So I just don't think that our residents should be left out of that vote when it comes to the referendum. So that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Brandy. I would say that um, the majority of the individuals from Shondalock who want to uh participate in downtown events currently participate already. Uh, but uh, I hear what you're saying. Thank you. Councilperson David.
Hey, thanks.
From the outskirts.
Yeah, fir- first of all, I want to, I just want to say how appalled I am at uh council member Haynes implication that I can't take into account folks that live in the dirt roads feelings and and desires because I don't live on a dirt road. That is completely, completely false. I think I've done and and several council members that have, that don't live on dirt dirt roads represent this town as uh residents of Windermere first. The implication that I can't vote on something based on where I live is completely insane, first of all. Um, you know, and I'm sitting here, I, the the entire time uh council member Haynes was talking, I just had to bite my lip because that that whole implication just, it it drives me insane. I've heard it before. Um, I have taken great pride in serving this town. And representing the entire populace fairly and listening to the residents regardless of where they live. That's first. So now that I've gotten that rant out of the way, I've got a couple of questions for Brad. Brad, first of all, um, the uh costs to maintain roadways, sidewalks, um, power systems, things, those are all borne by either the utility company or the HOA, correctly?
Correct. Everything inside the gates are borne by them. Yes, sir.
Okay. Secondly, um, the gating of the community, um, does that preclude any uh law enforcement or fire response?
Not at all, and they would coordinate with Chief Ogden to make sure their system complies with the Towns Gate ordinance where Chief Ogden assures that the system for emergency access is useful and it works for them. So it would not.
Okay, those are my two correct questions and a a slight rant. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Robert, if I can kick in, we follow the same ordinance as the county, so they have click to enter, so we we have, we have access already.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, councilperson David. Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Um, yeah, I mean, this, this whole thing about you know, outskirts and core and, you know, it it is, it is very difficult to hear. You know, we, we operate as one town. We treat everyone as one town. We listen to everyone, no matter where they live. Um, we listen to people that don't even live in town. So I I mean, I think that it's a it it is a little bit of a tough pill to swallow to hear that. Uh, those types of statements for sure. Um, and this has nothing to do with diluting or or anything like that. This is, this is, this is, this is clear economics. Uh, and and making smart moves that allow us to maintain a reasonable mileage rate. Maintain our services, use our services more efficiently and effectively. Um, we basically serve these folks who live there anyways. Um, you know, I can't think of a single issue that we've had with this particular area. Um, you know, I mean, it it is a you know, there are just some of these that come about that are, they're just super sensible. You know, again, there are those that will require deep conversation and and lots of discussion. And uh really weighing the pros and cons in my mind, even talking to some of the most conservative residents. Uh, this is not it. This is, it it's just plain sensible. Um, any additional comments from council or questions? I'd like to get public input now. Unless there's anyone.
I do. I, I find it unfortunate that you thought that you're appalled by this, Tony, because what I was referring to was not how council's decisions votes were. It was that the residents of the town who don't want these things feel that other residents who are not going to see things the same way they do downtown will feel that way. These are not my, just my comments. In fact, most of them aren't. These are all things I have written down, the email I received from a resident. Comments from residents about their concerns about the diluting happened at the last workshop. I invite you to go back and listen to that because that was not my comment. I have probably fifteen texts right now just said that was not correct. My comments weren't about council. They don't know why you feel this way. And these are coming from residents. Not me. So, you know, I hope that these residents will reach out to you in addition, Tony, as to just reaching out to me. Because this is comments coming from the constituents of this town, not just me. And and it's very unfortunate that you feel that it's like a personal attack on you. I literally just said that I feel like council members have done a great job at listening to feedback over the last few years. So I, I, I guess you missed that component. But I, you know, for the residents that are listening, that have sent me messages, I hope that you reach out and and let Tony know that this is the way you feel rather than people just thinking this is my opinions. Because this is very unfortunate that you can't see past that.
Any additional comments from council?
I'm good, mayor.
All right. All right. We have the opportunity for some public input. If you'd like to raise your hand and let us know. Frank Krenz, please. If you'll just give us your name and address. Um, as you do this as well, just for the record.
Okay, Frank, can you hear me okay?
We can, sir.
Frank Krenz, seven twenty-seven, Forest. I, I'm very impressed with the package, with the presentation, all the work that was done. It's really good, thorough. And I, and and you've answered most of my questions. Relative to what Brandy just said. I remember a mayor that we had wanted to annex Alworth. Wanted to pave all the roads. It was a very different time. You know, in that era, I think town council wasn't listening. I think the mayor was uh off and kind of blew yonder. There is risk, in my view, of annexing, not this annex. I I don't think there's any risk, really. Alworth, on the other hand, would be, in my view, would be a substantial risk and I would be concerned about the very kinds of things that Brandy was talking about if we annex Alworth. So.
Yeah, no, Frank, I I totally hear you. I mean, again, and that's why I really want to be clear here. This is not that. You know what I'm saying? So I I want everyone to understand that that there are annexation propositions that could significantly change the character, right? And that is important and there, you know, should that ever be considered one day, you would need to have a whole entirely different charter to make that work. I'm not a proponent of that, but it is a, you know, but I I do want to be really clear that this particular situation actually helps support the healthiness of the town in order to not make those other types of annexations necessary in the future or even the discussion in the future. Council will always have the ability to have those conversations. Um, you know, and you're right, we can't predict the future, but I do trust that, you know, we have good people. You know, we don't have, uh, I I've, I've served proudly with lots of individuals from these HOA communities. And they are, they are just as engaged, uh, if not more sometimes. They are very open-minded. You know, they worry about their street, they worry about the whole town. And that's exactly what a good council person should do. Uh, but I mean, I, there is no, I'm telling you, having the pleasure of serving with several, there is no difference.
I I appreciate that and I I agree that I, you know, you've allayed any fears I've had about annexing this. You know, this community, I I think it's pretty much zero risk. And and everything sounds like a benefit as opposed to a a negative.
You know, one of the things too, just, uh, you know, I'll just, uh, we're going to have, uh, Bill Martini's got his hands up. We'll have him speak next. But you know, one of the things that people that we we need to remember is there are certain situations, you know, some people weren't thrilled with certain annexations there, but you know, you prevent by controlling your borders and boundary, you can prevent things like having you know, four-story uh apartments right at your doorstep. So, you know, that can't happen in this case because this is already built out. But, you know, they're just kind of you know, i- if if you can control these things, it gives you a tremendous ability to to predict and to plan what your community looks like. The other, the other example I'll use is, you know, a very wise council in the past took the opportunity to control our roadways that came through town. So Main Street and Conroy Windermere. If they had not done that, those would be four-lane roads now. And that would really have changed the character of our community. So, you know, sometimes we got to do these smart things that are small and bite-sized. So we don't have to kind of deal with some of these things that are kind of earth uh changing for us. So thank you, Frank. I appreciate your input. As always, great job.
Okay, if I could say one more thing.
The memorial service today. Mr. Martini, sir.
I think Frank had one more thing to say.
Oh, Frank didn't mean to cut you off.
Which is unusual for Frank.
Yeah, again, I I think this is, this is a great. I think what you're doing is the right thing and and I, I'm totally with it. I would say there's a risk. There, there aren't many people on the call. Like with the, well, like with the pavilion. I think if you put it out there for the town to actually make the decision, you're taking a big risk. If you, if you open that up to a town vote, I would advise against it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it is a, um, so listen, this is a a situation where you have uh, you know, everybody loves affordable housing. No one will vote for it next door. So, I mean, it's something to factor in. Thank you, Frank. Mr. Bartini.
Uh, yes, although I think I'm probably repeating uh stuff that has already been said, but but I think it's a, it's really a safe bet to annex Shondalock. Uh, I mean, we get additional revenue. There's, there's very little additional cost to provide the services to that area. We increase our buffer with Ocoee and Orange County, uh, because like you said, eventually somebody's going to grab it. And you know, these people are already our neighbors. Like Chief said, uh, you know, most of the people that live there already feel like they're part of our town, uh, our community. And, you know, it's a good, it's a pro, it's a stable, mature community. And, um, you know, I I think it's a no-brainer for us to annex them. I don't think there would be a big impact on politics, uh, you know, as far as council goes, even if it did. You know, even if somebody did throw their hat in the ring, it may prompt some other people who are on the fence to jump in as well. So, you know, maybe a little healthy competition. But it's not like, you know, as we've seen in the last few elections. It's not like people are beating down the door to uh to get those positions. And, um, you know, but like I said, those folks are already our neighbors. They're already, you know, part of this town. So I I would welcome them in officially. Uh, other, other communities, uh, as Frank mentioned, absolutely not. But that's a whole different conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, that was Bill Martini, six oh eight Ridgewood, right? I get that right?
Six twenty-seven.
Six twenty-seven. All right. Um, any additional public comment at this time? All right, seeing none. Council, so, you know, as always, we have these workshops, uh, so we can take the feedback from from previous meetings and workshops and discussions as well as those meetings with um, the area requesting to be annexed. And what what our guide here is tonight is to see if we want to move forward um, with the process to give staff direction and exactly how they would, how that would look. You know, the options in front of you, so not looking to poll anybody, but I think what I'm trying to do is get a general consensus of where everybody is at on this. Uh, basically, I think there's, there's a couple of options. There's a there's an affirmation that says we'd like to move forward with this. Typically, when we do these annexations, we do not do a townwide referendum. Um, for those reasons that we have talked about, there's cost involved with that as well. Um, but obviously, council can make their desires known. We can consolidate that and give that direction to staff. Anyone want to chime in? Councilperson Deb.
Yeah, mayor, I think we should move forward with this.
Referendum or no referendum, sir?
Uh, no.
Councilperson, uh, David.
Um, I, I vote to move forward with this. I know we're not voting, but move forward with it and no town vote.
Councilperson Williams.
Move forward with it, no referendum.
Councilperson Haynes.
Move forward with the referendum for the town residents.
So, um, move forward but with referendum, right? Brandy, that, but just to be clear.
I think I think the residents should be heard.
Councilperson Drew.
I personally have no objection to the annexation. I like hearing from the residents on issues that affect all of us as a town. So I, yes, move forward. My personal choice would be referendum. But I don't have, I don't have a problem with annexing it personally.
Thank you. I appreciate uh your input as well. All right. I I also, I do want to say one thing to clear, uh, to be clear as well. Not have, not having a referendum does not mean there's no input uh, by the public. There will be several opportunities here, I think, two additional uh, meetings to discuss just this. If I'm, is that correct, Robert? What's our schedule? I'll hit you one second. Go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, we'll have at least more than one. Um, we're planning on having um, two public input meetings um, with the Shondalock residents. We'll also have two public meetings with the uh, community at large. Um, then as far as the referendum and ordinances that have to be associated with that, with the report and sending it to Orange County, that gives them a lot of opportunities for various bites at the apple, so to say. Oh, one second, one second.
Heather, why don't you go ahead now?
Mayor, I wanted to point out to you that there has to be, by statute, at least before the ordinance is adopted, two advertised public hearings of the, for the town, just like your normal. There has to be, so.
So several uh opportunities for public comment, several opportunities for public input um, as well as an open hearing, uh, that will take place uh on this matter if if it moves uh forward. So just, I want to make sure that we're clear on that. Um, there are, you know, certainly there are issues with referendums. Um, we have used them in the past for for example, borrowing money for the building. Um, we have not in the past had a referendum for um, annexation of any area in town. So just a little historical perspective. All right. So I think staff, does that give you the direction you need?
All right, sir, I'm sure you're my son and my dog.
It's all right, he's, he's welcome, we'll take his input too.
Uh, he just wanted iPad to play Minecraft and, uh, Roblox.
I don't blame him.
Um, yeah, I mean, the direction that we wanted was to figure out if we wanted a, a townwide referendum, or just a specific referendum for Shondalock. Um, you know, we've gotten that guidance, uh, tonight, you know, that can always change when, um. There's meetings with town council, and we have the public input meetings and so on and so forth, but. Um, anyway, yeah, no, definitely, I appreciate the input.
All right, thank you all, we appreciate, uh, everyone's input on this topic. At this time, we're gonna move to our FY twenty-three, twenty-four mid-year budget report. Robert's gonna report today on this.
Yes, sir, again, sorry about that, my.
Do you need some time to load up Minecraft first, or, or are you, are you ready?
Um, if I can have like maybe three minutes just for a, uh, facilities break, that'd be great.
That will be good. We'll make like hold music. Clerk Burkhalter.
Yes, sir.
I, I knew you, Ron, thank you for, for, um, popping in here, I see you now, um. Do you recall the last referendum, what was the cost for that?
I do not remember off the top of my head, but the costs have gotten really expensive. And even with the new, um, supervisor of election, we just had a meeting not long ago. And our normal elections rates have increased quite a bit, so.
Okay.
It's gonna be, yeah, it'll be, there'll be a cost.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's, it's, I, I wanna say it's ten grand at least.
And I, and I, I.
But we'll get the, we'll get the action.
And I'm listening to the conversation, I don't have a dog in the fight. But I can remember back in the early nineties, mid-nineties, when annexation was discussed before Isleworth was even what it is. People used to park their cars with their boat trailers and park there to access the boat ramp over there and. And how the forefathers back then would say, you know, we really need to annex, we need to annex these groves to protect our town and. No, 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 and I wonder today if that annexations would have happened, what the town would be like today.
Yeah, no, it's always, it's difficult and, uh.
It is.
It's always difficult, you know, I use the railroad right away, I use the, you know, I know for a fact that. You know, there was a lot of opposition to the roundabouts, we would not be able to drive through this town today.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's, and, and it's hard, you know, it's, it's.
It is.
It, it is, it is difficult, and it's, you know, but that's why we have a good, uh, a good staff and good decision-makers and. Good input to, to try to make the best decisions that we can.
And, and Robert was right about the west tip of Second Avenue, that had to be annexed into the town from the county. Many, many years ago, they weren't originally in the town.
Yep.
All right, sir, I'm back, sorry about that.
All right, now, you, you just saved everyone from me singing, so you're, it's a good thing already.
All right, um, so again, thank you for the, uh, the input on the, um. Annexation request, again, this is the, uh, budget analysis report for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget, again, this gives you a look of. Where we are in the current budget year and what we're looking at by the end of the fiscal year. This also gives us somewhat of a roadmap for, uh, next fiscal year and hopefully. Uh, possibly the next five years, depending upon what projects we're able to go ahead and fund. So the first thing we always look at is the revenue report, and again. We do very conservative estimates, and the way that we do that is, we don't just look five years in the past, we look ten years in the past. Um, so, when I first got to the town of Windermere, I made sure that we created Excel spreadsheets, because a lot of times what. Um, finance clerks do, or, um, town managers do, is that they just. Increase everything by five percent, thinking it's always gonna go up, but as we've seen in a lot of, um, the roller coaster that is, um. You know, our current state of affairs right now, uh, things go up, things go down, and there are some things that, um, weren't anticipated back in the day that are, you know. Um, status quo right now, especially when it comes to community service, commu- communication service tax. Um, you know, there's reasons why that's up and why half-cent sales tax is down, and we make sure that we're. Very aware of what's going on in the world to make sure that we're accurate with our, um, revenues. And also, there's sometimes, there's, there's a, uh, anomaly that might occur, and I think we had that with the franchise agreement with, uh. Uh, Duke Energy, I think it was probably about five years ago, uh, to where that would have thrown the entire, uh, numbers off. Because we saw somewhat of a windfall, uh, based upon the fact that they misallocated the amount of homes that were actually in the town of Windermere. Uh, through the annexations that were done in, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand, um, ten. Um, so again, we tried to take those anomalies out, make sure that whatever we're presenting to you is accurate and, uh, make sure that it is, um. Um, you know. We're being very cost-conscious and making sure that everything is, uh, accurate. Again, when we get to. One second here. Property taxes, whenever we do a avalorm assessment, um, again, we take your home and then we divide it into one thousand. And then what we do is, um, uh, we multiply that by ninety-five percent, and that's where we get the. Uh, cost estimates for the avalorm, so what we're receiving is what's gonna be paid out is three-point-three-nine-one million. The code enforcement action, or action assessments, uh, we didn't have any this year, so it's gonna be a wash when you see the expenditures. Uh, and revenues, they're both zero, so that's not gonna be a negative impact. Uh, parking tennis passes, we actually seen an increase because, um, you know, with the Fernwood, uh. Uh, boat ramp, um, and the gate codes, um, I think people are less likely to share those, uh, codes and share there's those keys. So we have seen an increase in that, uh, solid waste assessment against a tax assessment, so we're going to receive the entirety of that. Uh, HPP, we've seen an increase again, because they are the benefactors of the, um, uh, food trucks. Uh, Treeboard Committee, you know, originally anticipated about thirty thousand dollars, um, they are the recipients of the. Farmer's market. Um, but you'll see with the HPP, Treeboard, Parks and Recreation, their revenues are, um. Cancelled off with their expenditures, because what we do is we put anything that's over there, um, or under their. Expenditures, so if they make more revenue than expenditures, that balances over that, we put it into their restricted reserves, so they can spend that later. And that'll come into account with, uh, Parks and Recreation Committee. Uh, the franchise fee for Duke, again, we're gonna see possibly a fifteen thousand dollar shortfall on that one, uh, against being very conservative. Uh, with the half-cent sales tax, we're gonna see a little bit of a shortfall, about twelve thousand dollars on that. And typically with the half-cent sales tax, communication service fees, and some of the state distributions. We work with the Department of Revenue to get those estimates, but they don't provide those estimates until August. Uh, which is after we have our budget sessions, so they come in a little late, but we try to be, again, as close to possible of. Uh, what we came in last year, and then project out what's gonna come in in the next six months. Uh, zoning and plan review, currently we only received about six thousand two hundred sixty-eight. Um, typically, we reconcile that when a project is completed, before they get CO, they have to, uh, pay for everything that they have. Um, utilized to make sure the development is paying for itself. And what you'll be seeing at the June Town Council meeting is the possibility of increasing those planning and zoning fees. And that is due to the fact that we haven't increased those fees since twenty-fourteen. Uh, federal appropriations, we haven't received those yet, um, but we're doing it as far as an estimate, the cancel that cost out, so there's no. Negative impact, and you'll see that when we look at the expenditures in Public Works, that, that is gonna be offset, same thing that has to do with the, um, American Recovery Act. We just have to make sure those, uh, monies are committed by twenty-twenty-six. Uh, tree mitigation fund, we haven't received any money for the tree mitigation. Most of the time what's occurring right now is the fact that when people are found in violation, they have the opportunity to replant. Uh, on their property, we saw that with the five-hundred block, and we also saw it with, um, um, Magnifica. Uh, one and un event, they were able to receive more money than they spent, and then you'll see the offset in the legislative fund. Uh, interest, this is one of the things that we saw a significant increase in, this is because we have all of our reserves and other monies in interest-bearing accounts. Back in the day, we would see maybe ten to twelve thousand, but with, um, you know, Tara and Teresa working very hard in finance. Um, we've seen a huge windfall of plus, uh, sixty thousand five hundred dollars in interest alone. And when you see at the very end, when it comes to adding to our reserves, uh, that'll hopefully increase for next fiscal year, until we're able to spend those dollars. Uh, state appropriations, roads, that is for Windermere Road and Main Roundabout. Uh, the multimodal, that is one million from the state appropriation, uh, potable water, again, the three-point-zero-eight-one million. The wastewater study, three-seventy-five. Uh, stormwater transfer, the reason we put the one-thirty-one-seven-oh-two is to offset the cost for the, uh, hazard mitigation grant programs. That we're currently working under, um, you know, it's, it's taken a lot of time, and you'll see the expenditures in Public Works that. Um, you know, it's taken a lot of more engineering costs in order to get that increase in the, um. State dollar or the federal dollars that's running through the state, uh, in order to make sure that we're compensating for the cost of the increase from both Irma and Ian. Uh, oxygen surplus, again, when we sold the, uh, dump truck, we saw a, uh, huge increase in that. Um, utility taxes, utility water, gonna come in, pretty much add around what we budgeted. Uh, communication service tax, this is one of those things that, um, we thought was gonna go down, uh, probably about five years ago. And it's one of the things that has been continuously attacked by, uh, state legislators. Uh, but with everybody moving towards, um, you know, streaming services. Um, bundling, stuff like that, we've actually seen a significant increase, and I don't see that ending anytime soon. Uh, local business tax, we're looking at about ten thousand dollars, which we originally planned for, building permits. It might show it as a loss, but again, the revenue over expenditure is gonna be a wash, because we have an eighty-twenty split. So, whatever, um, PDCS charges for their building permit fees, they get eighty percent of that, and we've received twenty percent of that. Uh, so when you look at the expenditures, they'll just have eighty percent of that, two-twenty-five. Uh, right-of-way use permits, we have seen a significant increase in that. Uh, the reason why is because we've really cracked down on, uh, what people are putting in the right of ways, and making sure that they adhere to the right-of-way, uh, use agreements. Uh, so we've seen a significant increase in that, and making sure that people are abiding by the current rules and regulations that we have for right-of-way use, uh, agreements. Uh, FEMA state grant, um, what we received from Ian and Irma, we are making sure that we show the expenditures and revenues to make sure that they offset. Again, this is the continuation of, uh, Tony's great work, uh, with Ross Stain to make sure that we're getting projects funded. Um, and that both Ross Stain is, um, being paid, and also any additional monies that we get for projects is gonna be reflected. And offset the, uh, revenues and expenditures. Uh, the general fund transfer for the HMGP that we were planning on for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, when you see the amount of money that we're gonna have left over in reserves for this next fiscal year, we're gonna deduct that from. What we're gonna transfer in, but I had to show it because, um, that's what was budgeted, but we can go ahead and reduce that when we go to the, uh. Budget amendments, budget amendment process. So again, code enforcement, that's gonna be offset, because we didn't have the assessments, uh, the half-cent sales tax is down, the ARPA funds will be committed. Um, and the one-point-three million dollars that we have, or one-point-three-nine that we have right now. We just have to make sure it's committed to project by twenty-twenty-six, and we're definitely be able to do that with. Uh, potable water systems for West Second Avenue, Bessie Butler, um, and some of the other areas to make sure that we're offsetting some of that cost. Especially from the HMGP grants and the seven-sixty from the Safe Routes Schools Program, that we've been waiting in the hopper for about four years. Um, you know, we're hopefully gonna be able to break ground, hopefully in September and work towards that. But those monies will move over to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, anything we spend this year is gonna be deducted, and make sure that it's not a. Um, uh, budget hit, because we planned for it. And as I said, building services and zoning deposits, um, the boards and committees are outweigh the costs, and the miscellaneous, um, that we had. Besides the surplus and auction, that was increased, because we received, I think, about sixty-five or sixty-seven thousand dollars from Waste Pro. For the damage they did at, um, Park and Main, uh, Roundabout, when they had a broken axle and, um. The oils, and then also when they turned on to Lake Butler Boulevard. Again, interest was up, state appropriations, the revenue's gonna be outweighed by the expenditures, to make sure that, uh, it's offset, um. The FEMA reimbursement, stormwater transfer will cover each of the HMGP engineering expenses, which I'll show you again in, uh, Public Works. And again, the general fund transfer, we'll talk about that when we get to the very end. Any questions on revenues right now? I know I'm talking fast, I just wanna be very conscious of your time.
All good so far, unless there's questions? See none?
All right, thank you. All right, legislative. Travel on per diem, we always plan for two thousand, but, um, most of the time, we do everything that's local, and we try to do that with staff as well, to make sure if there's a. Uh, anything that has to do with CLEs or some sort of, um, certification for programs, we try to make it local as much as possible. Uh, unless their CLEs are coming up, and they have to make sure that they get that education, to make sure they keep their, uh, licenses or certifications. Um, the biggest one that hasn't legislated that should would show you over would be the wine and dine event. Again, whatever they receive in revenue, we show in expenditures, to make sure that offsets, so it's not a negative overall budget hit. The holiday social, uh, came in under budget, and what I'm gonna do for the next fiscal year is actually make this into. A board and committee, uh, to make sure that we're keeping track of what they have raised over what they spent, to make sure if they have reserves. Able to spend that for, uh, not only the holiday social, but anything that they wanna put towards us in ten-year celebration. And with the employee pretty appreciation, again, when the cost went up, um, but a thousand dollars of that. Uh, the Windermere Police Department Foundation usually, um, gives a thousand dollars to, um, the staff of the town of Windermere. To offset that cost, to thank them for all of their administrative help, uh, for the Windermere Police Department Foundation. So again, when you take a look at all the costs, um, especially with the fact that, um. One and O is twenty-six thousand dollars over, the overall, um. Budget impact would be, uh, you'd be over by thirteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, which, without the, uh, increase in the, uh. Windermere Wine and Dine, you would be underneath, uh, with West Orange Times, again, I really get into each and every detail of every cost. Um, when you see Tara and Teresa work with me, I have every single dollar that is spent, and I go through each and every one to pick out which anomaly is not. Something that we're gonna have to look forward to for next fiscal year, and then what we could possibly save on, or we can identify what is starting to increase over the. The period of time, we make sure that's reflected not only in the six, or the, uh, budget analysis report, but it's gonna be reflected in the twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, budget. Any questions on the legislative?
See none?
Please, sir. Uh, administrative, again, salaries, um, gonna be under a little bit, because we had transitions within the, um, um, executive assistant. Um, the biggest increase again is related to the legal fees associated with the boathouse litigation. Currently, we would have been on track for the one hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we budgeted. Um, but for the one forty, uh, that we currently have expended, uh, up to this point, this fiscal year. Um, for the boathouse litigation. And this amount would hopefully take us to the point of, um, trial, understanding that. I believe in August is when we have the summary judgments. Uh, I venture is gonna be under a little bit, um, again, that's something that, uh, Chief and I, we negotiated with I venture. Um, by working with, uh, Oakland ourselves, and trying to get a fixed cost, so it's easier for us to budget for, to make sure that. Um, if somebody is doing a, a software upgrade or something like that, we're not paying by the hour, we're just paying per. Um, station or per employee, um, so we're not worried about them, um, sitting around for three hours while something updates and being. Being charged per hour on that. Uh, server refresh, that was something that was not anticipated, uh, I think you guys all understood when, uh, we had that. Issue, I think it was in January, February, where the, uh, servers went down, uh, and we had to, um. Pretty much reinstall everything and make sure that everything is working accurately, uh, so that was un- un- unanticipated cost, but you can see that it falls underneath the. Twenty-seven thousand that we saved with I venture for them to do the server refresh. And so the total amount that you see here, I'm sorry, it's a little off-center. Um, is that we're gonna be over in administration by one-seventy-five, six-twenty-four, but keep in mind, we would have been under by about. is that we're gonna be over in administration by one seventy five, six twenty four, but keep in mind, we would have been under by about twenty four thousand and change if it was not for the legal services for the boathouse litigation. Any questions on administration? Seeing none? And a lot of these, a lot of these items that you see does show that we are staying either at around what we originally anticipated. And so when you see something that's under, more than likely, it might stay the exact same unless, you know, inflation goes up and stuff like that for next fiscal year, so it just shows you that Dorothy, Tanya, Chief, myself and all of our staff are being very cost conscious. And it shows again, it'd be very reflective to the residents that we are making sure we account for every dollar that is spent. And one of the things that we always tell people is, you know, if they're asking for something, it has to be a need, not a want. And it's like asking if you're taking out of my own personal bank account, so I make sure that everything is accounted for. Nothing too out of the ordinary here with advertising. We had some ordinances, some the assessment notifications and stuff like that, that was a little bit over. I did include the elections, even though we didn't have an election this fiscal year. But I did include thousand dollars allocation in case there was a referendum this fiscal year for the annexation of Chantelac. Any questions on clerk?
Seeing none?
Thank you, sir. Salaries, pretty much when you see salaries, FICA, FICA Med, retirement, healthcare, dental, vision, life, life ending gap insurance. Most of the time it's gonna remain constant, you know, unless we do a three percent increase for the employees. One thing to notice too is whenever we do a budget session, we typically do not, do not get the healthcare benefits until probably August. So we try to predict as much as possible and try to see the trends in various healthcare coverages and how they're increasing, decreasing, and how we can make sure that the towns financial contribution to retirement or to healthcare is similar to what's in the private industry, so we make sure the employees are taken care of and if they need to buy into a plan to cover their spouse or their family, we make sure we try to make accommodations for that, but currently the town only pays for employee only. The auditors fee, we plan for twenty five thousand. The current contract we have with McDermott Davis is for twenty thousand. And the reason for that five thousand, if we were going to spend any of the ARPA funds over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, we would have to do a single audit, and since we're not gonna do that year, we'll save the five thousand dollars. Spectrum increased again, so I'll make sure we reflect that next fiscal year. Tuition reimbursement, which is a a great perk for the ten employees is able to, for us to provide a thousand dollars, I think it's two thousand dollars per employee, if they want to increase their education and get certificates for that education and reimburse them two thousand dollars. They have to make sure they maintain a certain grade and also they have to make sure that the field that they are studying in is related to their current job position. So we've had Tanya has taken a lot of classes to enhance her education and I think Deputy Chief Bonk has as well. And some of the staff members have taken advantage of that too, so it's one of those added perks that doesn't add a huge chunk to the budget, but it does help with your staff, make sure that we have retention. Again, with finance, when you look at the totals, we're looking about about nine thousand dollars under what we originally anticipated. Any questions on finance?
I am not seeing any, Robert.
Thank you, sir. Development Services, this is always hard to budget for because again, you don't know what's going to occur within a fiscal year when it comes to various projects or developments. We have had a lot of development when it comes to the five hundred block with Magnifica and also with our comp plans and the possibility of looking at annexation reports. But again, with the increase in the fees that we'll be looking at in June, hopefully be able to bridge that gap of that fifty thousand dollars over. But the professional services, that is something that is, you know, basically, what you have for development and the balance of that is for requests, for phone calls, for Brad's time. And for the hundred thirty thousand dollars, when it comes to just a salary for the amount of disciplines that Wade Trim has, that price is a steal when it comes to having an entire business as opposed to just one individual, so that, that thirty thousand dollars that we're gonna be spending over what we anticipated is gonna be attributed to, again, a lot of the things that we discussed relative to extra meetings with five hundred block, extra means that we have a Brad, phone calls from council members to Brad, annexations and other issues that come up that we need to make sure that him and Amanda are paid for. Billing inspection fees, again, that one eighty is the eighty percent of the two twenty five that we anticipated. So for everything, the total for development services is gonna be over by about fifty thousand dollars. But again, we could attribute that to a lot of the planning and zoning issues that we've had over this past fiscal year. Any questions on development services?
I think my only comment would be there, Robert, you know, certainly we want council to have all the resources and information that they need. I would encourage council though to to check with staff first to see if they can get that answer for free. And and of course, if you can't get that answer, then, you know, always, of course, feel free to to use the the professional folks that we employ to to give us the exact details, but if there's the opportunity to pay nothing for the answer, it's good too.
Yes, sir, thank you. Public Works, debt service for Main Street Roundabouts, that is the last payment that we'll have in October of next fiscal year, so you will see the two sixteen, one forty five in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. But in subsequent years after that, you will not see that cost, so that'll be added to helping out pay for CIP projects. When I say CIP, again, I use a lot of acronyms, capital improvement projects. Debt service for facilities, again, it's three twenty seven. Salaries came under because we had transitions within Public Works and we also had one individual that had to take some medical leave. General Engineering, the fifty five thousand that was over, again, is attributed to not only, and this will come into the notes, Glora Engineering, John Fitzgibbon, Kimley Horne Associates. This is all the projects that we are currently working on, negotiating with either DEM, FEMA, or other jurisdictions, FDOT, to make sure that you know, the money that we believe is owed to us is paid. And so far, it's working pretty well with West Second Avenue, we're able to get that cost increase with Bestin Butler, we do anticipate that we're gonna get that cost increase as well. And again, so the HMGP grants will be paid out of that one hundred and I think fifteen thousand dollars, this will be coming out of the stormwater assessment because it is mostly stormwater related. Loan and maintenance, we changed, changed vendors. And we also included additional landscaping in certain areas with the Ninth and Oakdale. Janitorial services, we did see an increase because we had to change services. And we've pretty much moved a lot of the stuff over to the responsibility of that janitorial service when it comes to a lot of the supplies. Pest control, we do believe is gonna be seventy five hundred. Lakefront maintenance, this was increased to a lot of the stuff that we have done over in the Bessie area and some of the lakefront properties that were required by us by Orange County EPD. The wastewater study, we do have in here a three seventy five, which offsets the revenue that we're getting from the state for three seventy five, we do believe this is gonna be under. And any money that is underneath what is allocated to us, we'll get back to the state. Town hall decorations, again, you know, with the inflation and the rising cost of things, we'll make sure that we allocate the correct amount for next fiscal year. Miscellaneous facility repair, I think we had a well and a heat pump that went out, so that's why that is over, and again, that's reason why we take a look at every single expenditure to make sure we take into the anomalies for next fiscal year. Sidewalk bike path. Some of those monies were allocated in the road CIP, but that's gonna be reallocated to sidewalk bike path. That's a hundred thousand dollars that we allocate every single year per the twenty eighteen tax increase to make sure that we're spending it on not only rehabbing what we got, but also looking at where we can improve the sidewalk areas. Trying to figure out if there's any other anomalies here. Signs and banners, we'll get to that. Street Roads, Streets and Roads CIP. This is one of the things where I think we budgeted for about three, three million, five hundred and fifty, six million dollars. And that was both the water design, three point zero eight one million, and also the Streets and Roads CIP. As you know, with the twenty eighteen tax initiative, we always put four hundred thousand dollars away for the CIP, so when you see the four hundred over the six, eight forty, the balance of that will go into a restricted reserve that is just going to be for road projects. So that's gonna help offset the costs of the roundabouts at Windermere and Main and also the improvements at Chase and Main intersection, and also you can put money away for the Sixth Avenue Roundabout improvements. Multimodal, we didn't anticipate that this would be funded fully this fiscal year. It's not going to, so what you see reflected here is thirty five thousand, six eighty, and that was for a right away purchase that we make sure that we have all the railroad right away, I think it was like maybe five or six years ago, that we were finally able to negotiate a deal to where we can start getting a lot of that railroad right away, which is gonna be on the west side of Main Street. That has been in the talks and in the works for quite some time. The Windermere Roundabout, Windermere Road, Main Street Roundabout, again, I show the revenues over expenditures, West Second Avenue. What I did here is the two sixty five, seven forty one is potentially what we're gonna spend this fiscal fiscal year. This is not money that was allocated to us by the state or federal government. This is money that was going to be our match. So the revenue is not going to offset the expenditures on this one until we get the HMG, HMGP funds for that cost overage, but this is just what I'm anticipating spending for this until September thirtieth, this fiscal year. The CARES Act or American Recovery Act, again, I show that's a wash. And then with Hurricane Ian, this matches is actually below the fifty four thousand that we received from FEMA for Hurricane Ian. And as you see, they're gonna be under by about five hundred twenty six thousand dollars for this fiscal year, and again, it's not that we didn't wanna get the projects done, it's just a matter of working with other jurisdictions to get through the red trade, red tape to make sure that we get these projects done. So again, the multimodal, they include the additional right away. Hurricane Ian's offset by revenues, general engineering, you know, with KHA, Glora JFP or JPF and additional information for HMGP, FEMA appropriation projects. And then we added projects throughout the fiscal year, which, you know, we make sure that we have enough money when we talk about these projects, that we can be able to cover those, and that would be the Ninth and Oakdale, diverter, the Tenth and Main, the Rose property with the purchase of the right away, we're able to go ahead and improve the stormwater improvements over there. Signage and various stormwater issues, if somebody requests signage in a certain location, we have to make sure that we have KHA take a look at that as well as John Fitzgibbon. And then stormwater issues, again, they always arise when somebody has a complaint, so we make sure that we have the engineers take a look at it, incorporate it into our stormwater study or something that, you know, we can see if we can remediate on a temporary purpose. And then miscellaneous facility repair, again, we have town hall porch and the heat pump. And the porch was shoring up some of the back areas and also the ADA ramp. And again, the Streets and Roads CIP is gonna be offset with the revenues. The money will carry forward into next fiscal year, fiscal year, less the expenses. The miscellaneous repaving, that was over because the Ninth and Oakdale diverter. And then again, we had the well pump for miscellaneous expense, miscellaneous expenses, and then the Jackie Report bench, which we're still winning on the donation fees from that, and those are the two benches that are gonna be added just south of the our Armed Service Memorial on Old Brickman. Any questions before we get to parks?
Are those general donations for the Jackie Report bench, or was it from one of the committees or?
I can answer that, Robert. One was, one bench is being paid for by Jackie Report's family. The other bench is being paid for by Historic Preservation Board.
Great, alright, thank you so much.
Then, again, these are all the monies that we have through six months of the year, and currently we're in, I think, year or month eight. So we try to project that as best as possible. But, you know, we may be off maybe five, ten thousand dollars for certain things that have come up. But again, we try to be conservative and we try to anticipate any costs that are coming up and when we do the budget analysis, budget analysis report, the budget amendments in November, we'll make sure that all this is reflected to where you can see why something was over or something was under. For parks, playground mulch, again, that price is always going up, we wanna make sure that we have authorized either mulch or tire shards or something like that to make sure that we are reducing our liability in case somebody gets hurt. The tree canopy, we always make sure that we raise everything up prior to hurricane season, so we do anticipate that going to twenty thousand dollars, that may increase based upon what we need to do, but every year, we make sure that we try to raise everything up and trim all the deadly or the tree branches. And having the arbers take a look at stuff to make sure that what we can and to make sure that we are, you know, keeping our tree canopy and also protecting it to make sure once storms come through or if there's a continuous issue, we make sure it's remediated. Arbor day trees, this is something that's paid out of tree board, but we recoup them, the five thousand dollars, and that's one of the budget amendments we're gonna have to do in November to show that offset of that cost. Split rail fence, we did purchase more of that, I'm guessing that's probably gonna be about three thousand dollars, so I'd be remiss to say that that one thousand dollars is not gonna be spent, we just added some split rail fence over by where the community room was and also on the northeast corner of Forest and Sixth. We wanna make sure that we're protecting the culvert that was there, the trees that were there. And some of the library employees were parking too close to the trees and also too close to the culvert, so we wanna make sure that we're protecting that. And then for Parks and Recreation, that capital CIP, again, this is another twenty eighteen initiative that we wanna make sure that we were adhering to. That'll offset some of the costs of some of the Parks and Recreation Committees. Enhancements to the parks with the shades and the additional equipment that we put over in Palmer Park and Central Park. Any questions on Parks and Recreation? This is separate from Parks and Recreation Committee. Thank you, sir. Police, again, with the transitions that we have, and when it comes down to actual coding, you know, we like to budget everything out as far as when it comes to shift inferential, which is day shift versus night shift, staff matrix changes when somebody goes from officer one, two, or three, reserve salaries, if they go over and above what their allocation is for. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, sixteen hours a month?
Twenty hours a month.
Twenty hours a month. Yeah, if if they go over that, then we gotta make sure that they're paid for that. Off duty, again, we're pretty low this fiscal year, but any off duty is the revenues outweigh the costs, so make sure that they're paying for that. Also, they pay an admin fee of about ten percent. Overtime, I always allocate the full amount in case there is a storm that comes through, because again, hurricane season starts on June first. Incentive pay is also included in salaries. And when we have the coding through either ADP or through Accufund, you have to pay a certain amount of money for each and every individual code that you put in. But we just budget for it and then we make sure that is covered within the salaries as an overall catchall. So when you see things that are underneath, that just adds to what was underneath with the sixty six thousand that we saved in salaries, and again, that was through some of the transitions with more veteran people retiring or are with more veteran people retiring or are hiring of new officers and then retention of those officers as well. Again, FICA, FICA Med, retirement, that's all covered through the town. Psychologicals, you know, again, with all the people that we recruit, we have to make sure they do physicals and psychs. Fire service agreement, that's something that's standard. Currently, we pay eight hundred thousand. I was probably thinking back in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty one, we're paying six fifty, but again, that goes, that increases by fifty thousand dollars each year. Radar certs, vehicle repairs have been under because we make sure that if a car is about cycling out, because again, you know, we try to keep the car at least five years, but understand that police vehicles get more wear and tear than your normal average day vehicle because the officers on patrol, they're driving around, they have to hit excessive speed sometimes. So there's a lot more wear and tear on PD vehicles than your own personal vehicle. Copier maintenance, we had an issue with the copy machines and we're going to try to rectify that in the next fiscal year. Chief wanted me to let you know that his car is ten years old, so he might be requesting one for next fiscal year. Dispatch fee that usually goes up per the CPI each and every year. Again, we use Winter Garden for our dispatch fee. Power DMS, we actually added a system this fiscal year. I think it was for the policies. Again, we want to make sure that we're accreditation compliant. We did have the ten year DC memorial this year. I believe it's going to be underneath that five thousand dollar threshold. The Verizon Air cards, this is something that we're planning on phasing out this fiscal year, but it's something that we believe is a necessity for the laptops, also for the MiFives. With the uncertainty in today's climate, today's age, we'll try to reduce the amount of MiFis that we have. And again, the MiFis are the portable Wi-Fi systems. And if you don't have one, please let me know. We'll make sure that you have one so you can access the Wi-Fi in case you're in a rural area that doesn't have Wi-Fi. I don't know. I don't think Brandy has one, but we'll make sure that when you're traveling, you have it in case we have to have a emergency session. Or when you're in a rural setting and you need to attend a town council meeting or a workshop, you're able to do so. Here is reflection or reflective of the twenty four, twenty twenty four vehicle one. We had enough money to go ahead and pay for a car in full. So we weren't wanting to go ahead and lease those cars. And then with vehicle two and three, those are Deputy Chief Bonk, Bonk's car and Detective Wilson's car that you approved at the Maytown Council meeting for purchase. And again, I think this cost is going to be offset with the sale of those two vehicles. We had to buy a towing winch, which I don't believe was anticipated for in this fiscal year. But the total amount that you have for police for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four is going to be about a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars under what was originally anticipated. And again, here's the background where we don't have a general ledger code for each section. Again, with transitions, the psychs, the uniforms, again, that's, that's always going to fluctuate depending upon your retention. And then the patrol cars and then the twenty twenty four car that we purchased outright. The type of equipment was, I think it was like four thousand dollars. That was something that we didn't anticipate for in the twenty twenty three, twenty four budget, but that was the PD shed that we needed for ancillary storage. And again, we added the policy software system for batteries. We had to buy batteries for the speed trailers. And then we had for ammos and guns, that was over for the ten spear lawman training. Any questions on police department? We didn't have to pay for additional tires for John Fitzgibbon this year, so that was great.
Yes, I'm getting my tires are this year.
There you go, sir. Code enforcement? I'm sorry, was there any additional questions for police department?
I didn't see any, Robert.
Thank you, sir. Code enforcement, special magistrate. Again, code enforcement isn't to punish, it's to make sure that people are brought to code. We haven't really had to take anybody all the way to an actual code enforcement hearing this fiscal year. So I'm just anticipating that the max cost would be about five hundred dollars for Special Magistrate Myers's work. Code officer, again, that's basically a fixed cost, even though we do get a increase usually in March or April timeframe, but I'm going to work with Craig Shandrick, the new city manager of ACOE to make sure that we understand what that CPI is possibly going to be. So we can anticipate for that full budget cost for the end of the fiscal year. And we had to get a new workstation for code enforcement because her system was currently outdated. But as you can see, we're going to be about seven thousand dollars what we originally anticipated. And with the compliance actions, you can see that we didn't spend any money. So we save five thousand and with revenues, we didn't receive five thousand, so that offsets. Any questions on code enforcement?
Seeing none, Robert.
Boards and committees, long range planning, we typically don't really allocate any funds for them each fiscal year. But this year, we're going to do a strategic planning session with them, like we're doing with HPP, Parks and Recreation and Tree Board to make sure that they have goals and objectives and pretty much give them guidance on what they need to start looking at over the next couple of fiscal years and give them better direction, I would say. Parks and Recreation, they're going to be over by about a hundred thousand dollars this fiscal year. You know, one is going to be offset by about, I think, one twenty five, what we're anticipating them for revenues this year. But the fifty thousand dollars that they have will be brought in from their specific reserves to offset that cost. So again, you have your board and committee reserves, which you have Parks and Recreation Committee. Each and every year that they don't spend what they take in goes into a restricted reserves for them to go ahead and make recommendations for town council for park improvements. And that would come out of their reserve amount. The twenty five thousand that is allocated by the town of, town of Wintermere helps offset that cost and it also builds as well. So we're very mindful with Parks and Recreation Committee, we meet them on a monthly basis and let them know where their financials are at. Tree Board, the five thousand out of that, eight thousand, eight oh three, so they're pretty much their expenditures are about three thousand, three oh three. But their revenues pretty much offset their expenditures. And again, that'll go into the restricted reserve. And HPP, they're going to be taking in thirty two thousand this fiscal year. And that is going to offset from the revenues. And again, that goes into a restricted reserve. Ways Committee for next fiscal year, I've been working with Lysander on trying to revamp the Ways Committee to get them back going. And trying to work with the Floralega Cities to not only get us some funding, but also some help and guidance on trying to recruit and retain some of the Wintermere Active Youth Committee. Any questions on boards committees?
Seeing none, Robert.
Thank you, sir. So revenues over expenditures, the total revenues and expenditures that we budgeted for pretty much offset each other at sixteen million, eighty one thousand, one forty one. What we're anticipating bringing in for revenues for this fiscal year is sixteen million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty three. Again, you know, we show the revenues outweighing the expenditures when it comes to the state appropriations, the federal appropriations to make sure that, you know, there's more deficit or way to above as far as what we anticipate and what we spent, because we do anticipate that going into a restricted reserve up until the point we actually spend that money. For the expenditures, we came in underneath at fifteen million, six ninety two, nine ninety seven. So the difference is six twenty five, four fifty six, fifty six. And that tells you again, we should the revenue versus the expenditures for the state and federal. Sorry about that. So it shows you the revenues over expenditures and we did account for all the appropriations. So at around six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars would be able to be transferred to the reserves of the town of Wintermere. Which would put you, I think, about two point three or four million dollars in your reserves for next fiscal year to utilize to offset any of the cost increases for future projects that we have coming up or for, again, the potential for funding projects that we're still waiting on those costs, maybe for a town hall or something else. And this doesn't account for the money that we have to repay. Healthy West Orange, which we're still negotiating, I'm waiting for the order board to come back to me on the decision on the ninety seven thousand dollar repayment. So in summary, with the conservative estimates of revenue and controlling expenditures, we all come in about six hundred and twenty five thousand, five hundred into reserves. We continue to submit for reimbursements related to grants awarded and there was grants are not really reflected in the revenues until we receive them. And the balance of the ARPA funds will be pretty much committed to in twenty four, twenty five to make sure we meet that twenty twenty six threshold. And the seven seventy, seven sixty from Representative Demings, probably about four years ago. We make sure that's going to be rolled into next fiscal year. And again, the balance of the appropriations is going to be rolled into next fiscal year. So look ahead for next fiscal year, which is twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. You may think it's too early to plan for that, but typically we have our first budget hearing in mid to late July. Or not budget hearing, but budget workshop. And we typically have two, July, August, and then our hearings would be in September. But we're currently working on that and we're currently making sure that there's not going to be a request to increase the millage. Again, we're working on the Butler Basin Stormwater Project and Pottable Water System, Bessie Stormwater Pottable Water System. West Second Avenue, again, we've got that increase from FEMA, which is fantastic. The old dirt main paving and Pottable Water System, this would be from West Second Avenue, north to the canal. Phase one of the Ward Trail, which includes the pedestrian bridge, the wastewater report, which we're going to be able to spend those state appropriations hopefully this fiscal year, but it depends on how quickly KHA can get that. And I believe that they were trying to get it done within six months, which takes us into the next fiscal year. Pavement Management Plan, once we have that in place, which is a plan that we do pretty much every five to eight years to make sure that we take a look at all the paved roads, see what their lifespan is. And then we look at the prioritization based on need and traffic. Then we can come up with a five year CIP and make sure that we have money saved in order to pay for those costs. And I do believe that Main Street we did in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And I think the lifespan will probably be coming up in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. So that'll be something we have to make sure that we put money away for to fully fund. Central Pottable Water Phase, town council approved that back in April. Hopefully, you know, we'll spend the three point zero eight one million by the next fiscal year. The Chase and Main Intersection Improvements, I'm still waiting for the mayor to, or the governor to sign the the budget. Once he signs the budget, then we'll be able to go ahead and allocate those funds for three point two five. Wintermere Road and Main Street, again, we had those monies and we already started the design on that. And then North Pottable Water Phase, where we rewarded the two point three nine six million for this fiscal year. Still waiting on the governor to sign the budget, but over the last three years, I mean, it's testament to you know, staff and working with our consultants and our engineers to make sure that we try to get as many grant opportunities or appropriations, but we've taken in probably about fourteen point six oh two million in grants and appropriations. So I really want to thank not only council, but also the staff for working hard and also our other elected officials on helping us get that money. So with that said, Mayor, I'll open it for any questions.
I appreciate it and thanks to staff and everybody for working to to get those appropriations that allow us to leverage our funds and and to keep our military where it is and still get these projects finished and through the, you know, and out there making things better for all the residents. Any questions for Robert on the FY twenty four or twenty, is it twenty three, twenty, twenty four, twenty five is the next one? So twenty three, twenty four right now?
Yes, sir.
All right. I do see Councilperson David as a sample. Councilperson David, you have the floor.
Yeah, Robert, just a real quick question and maybe premature. When will we understand what the payback for the Healthy West Orange Grant is going to be?
I had the meeting with their attorney. I would say a month ago. And I mean, I hate to say it, but the response was, you know, well, you're going to be talking to a separate attorney. And I was like, okay, but you know, the invoices are the invoices. So what Rotary Inc. has paid out to Healthy West Orange is at around a hundred thousand dollars. And we've looked over the invoices and I did that with John Fitzgibbon and also with Molly Rose. We looked at every invoice and we validated each one. And we were only agreeable to paying out what was invoiced up until the time that the town went ahead and you know, stopped proceeding with the pavilion and when Healthy West Orange went ahead and revoked or took away the the monies. Now, when I had discussions with Healthy with Healthy West Orange, they were only out a hundred thousand dollars out of the original one million dollars that was allocated for that project. So they're the only one thing that I, you know, I wouldn't pay for. I think they paid about fifteen hundred dollars for groundbreaking shirts and also for dedication shirts. And that was really premature and I would not agree to that. But everything else we agreed to, that it was work that was all the way up until the point that, you know, the the project was stopped. We do have outstanding invoices from McCree and maybe Hunter Brady. But again, those invoices haven't been paid by Rotary Inc. And also, a lot of those are for lost profits, which I don't believe the town is in a position to pay for. So my conversation was with them was, you know, this is what I believe town council is willing to pay for. And I need an answer of, you know, are you ready for us to cut a check or what's going on? And it's been in limbo since that point. I've talked to the attorney for Rotary Inc. and I've talked to Byron Sutton. And nothing to this point, but you know, the one thing we negotiated, I think it was like maybe ninety seven thousand, five hundred that the town would be willing to pay back. But again, I would need town council approval for that.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll, we'll need to readdress this whenever you get a response.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's better to be in our bank account than you know, just waiting on the response to figure out which avenue they want to take and then go from there.
Okay, is there, is there a possibility, Robert, that we could share some of the requests and responses with council?
From their attorney and from Byron?
Please.
Yes, sir. The conversations with their attorney was verbal and same thing with Byron, but anything that I can send you, I will. It's public record.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Anything from staff addition? All right, seeing none. We will go ahead and adjourn our town of Wintermere workshop at eight, twelve PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Good night, everyone. Have a good night.